We will now begin the pre-meeting for the May 1st, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have someone to go over the agenda this evening?
All right. Good evening, everyone. All right. Start off with old business, item number one. We have not heard back from the applicant yet, so staff is recommending that this item remain tabled. This is the last time that it can be tabled, so next month we'll... This is the last time, so. That takes us to new business, items 1A, 1B, and 1C. This is a conditional use permit and site plan for Dutch Bros at 100 Crossroads Plaza. Dutch Bros is a drive-through coffee kiosk. We have one that just opened on Bryan Road. The conditional use permit is for the drive-through, and then the site plan is for the building. It's just under 1,000 square feet with the associated parking and drive-through lanes. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the drive-through with our standard conditions, and then we are also recommending approval of the site plan with some of the following conditions: provide a demolition plan for the existing pavement and parking that's currently in place; correct the angle of the manholes to be 90 degrees or better; and then provide covenants and restrictions for the shared private infrastructure. So this is the overall site. You can see the existing Crossroads Plaza at the top of the plan, and then it kind of wraps around on the side. Here's further in. The manhole that we're talking about is right here. This will need to kind of angle out this way a little bit more. And then this shows kind of that it's kind of surrounded by the rest of the plaza, so they don't have full access all the way down to the end of that property line to extend the cross-access easement to the property to the south. And then here are the elevations of the building. Any questions on this?
Yes, Commissioner?
Is this about the same size as the one that just went in on Bryan Road?
I believe it is. I don't remember what the exact size of that one was, but I... It's... They're all about the same, yeah.
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Next is new business, item 2A. This is a request for a site plan for a building addition at 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive. The proposed addition is 16,500 square feet. They're also proposing a drive aisle to the rear of the building. This will start as a construction entrance, and then they'll pave it, or they're wanting to pave it, once the building is finished. The applicant provided correspondence from the O'Fallon Fire Protection District, saying that the access drive to the back does not meet the requirements of the fire access road, so they're asking that it be blocked off and have signage stating that it has limited width and access, so we have that included as one of our conditions. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan. Some of the following conditions: provide the fire district approval, MDNR, and then sanitary and water district approvals. The curb inlet at the entrance needs to be a minimum of six feet away from the entrance, and then they need to show how the existing downspouts will be connected in with this Here's the plan. I had to rotate it to get it to fit, so... Oops. Wrong way. So Hoff Industrial over on this side of the plan. This is the drive aisle coming to the back. There's not really a good turnaround, and it's kind of narrow, so we don't want that to be open to, you know, general traffic. And then this portion back here is the building addition. And then here are the elevations. This should match the existing building, so... Any questions on this?
Looks like there's no questions, so let's go on to the next item.
All right. Next is new business, item 3A. This is a request for a site plan for a medical office building at Sunview Drive and Bryan Road. The proposed building is 5,400 square feet. 3,000 square feet of that is for the medical office, and then the remaining 2,400 square feet is available for a future tenant. There is a shared access or shared drive aisle with the adjacent dentist office at the corner of Bryan Road. Staff's recommending approval of the site plan with some of the following conditions: provide a photometric lighting plan for at the top and bottom elevations of the retaining wall, and then provide covenants and restrictions for the shared private infrastructure, which is the drive aisle, the maintenance of that. Here is the site plan. This is the existing dentist. It used to be the Heaven Sent, and then their kind of shared aisle running down the middle. And here are the elevations for that building. Do we have to answer any questions?
Looks like there's no questions.
All right. That's all we've got on the agenda.
All right. Well, we'll recess then until 7:00, and we'll start our regular meeting. We will now begin the May 1st, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tracy, can you do the roll call?
Chairperson Carolyn Thomas.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Nunnery.
Present.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilwoman Cook.
Present.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Seymour.
Present.
Commissioner Nogger.
Here.
Commissioner Boust.
He's excused.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Lammers.
Present.
Commissioner Link.
Present.
Commissioner Eggemeyer.
Present.
Mayor, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Members of the Commission, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Nunnery.
Second, Link.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented for the May 1st, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. The agenda for this evening's meeting has been approved. At this point in the meeting, we will open it up to citizens' comments. We have one person that has completed a citizen's comment card. Mr. Deanoff.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is R. C. A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. First thing that I'd like to bring to your attention in compliance with state laws, the lack of meeting minutes. There's not approval or disapproval on the meeting agenda. Next item I'd like to speak about is 2A on the agenda. I believe it's 2A. Yes, 2A, or... Yeah, 2A. 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive. It's approximately a 16,500-foot addition to the building, and as was discussed in the pre-meeting and also the staff recommendation and staff information, the rear drive aisle does not meet the requirements of the O'Fallon Fire Protection District Codified Code, and that puts up a lot of red flags for me. We're not talking about residential here, but we're talking about commercial industrial uses, and the O'Fallon Fire Protection District requires a drive aisle to accommodate fire apparatus and first-in fire equipment. For them to rope it off and lock off that access drive aisle is just defeating the purpose, which is public safety and saving property and assets of this company. Staff reports that it does not meet the requirement, and therefore that roadway cannot be used. I would ask that as a condition for this property on Hoff Industrial Drive, that you require them to meet the Codified Code. I'll be calling the O'Fallon Fire Protection District Chief and Fire Marshal tomorrow to discuss this issue, because I think that the Codified Code needs to be done. If somebody's going to build a building, let's build it right the first time. Let's put all the safety mechanisms and all the required drive aisles that are necessary for public safety. The next issue that I'd like to talk about is 3A, which would be a medical office building, which is a new construction on vacant property at Bryan Road and Sunview Drive. This is just north of the O'Fallon Fire Protection District Station 4, and number one, part of the staff information is that it's going to be a shared driveway. I would make or ask that a condition be added that some type of agreement be recorded with the County Recorder of Deeds, that there is a shared roadway agreement here. And I asked one of the commissioners. He agrees with me that the sidewalk is currently on Sunview Drive, so hopefully we don't have any Americans with Disabilities Act violations or issues, and that we have a continued sidewalk on all the public streets and accesses to the property. One of the requirements is that they have to file covenant and restrictions, and hopefully those will cover any of the needed requirements to have a successful development. Those are my comments, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will close citizens' comments. We have one item under old business, but this item will remain tabled until the June Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Under new business, the first item we have is regarding 100 Crossroads Plaza Drive. This is a public comment and conditional use permit for 100 Crossroads Plaza Drive as well as for the site plan. Do we have someone to present this item on the agenda?
My name is Scott Felton. I'm a civil engineer for Premier Design Group, 100 Midlet Park Drive, Wentzville, Missouri. I'm here to request a site plan approval and conditional use permit for a proposed Dutch Bros coffee shop located at 100 Crossroads Plaza. The site is currently part of a strip mall just south of the newly constructed Andys, and currently it's a parking lot that serves the entire strip mall. The property is 0.69 acres in size and currently zoned C2. Our proposed development features a double-lane drive-through and a walk-up and pickup border window. There will be no indoor dining, as Dutch Bros operates as a quick-service model focused on drive-through and walk-up customers only. Access to the site will be through one direct entrance on Highway K with shared cross-access throughout the surrounding parking lot. We also include a 10-foot-wide asphalt shared-use path within MoDOT right-of-way. The plan includes 22 parking spaces, which exceeds the required four by code, and the drive-through stacking has capacity for up to 16 vehicles. For stormwater management, we will be utilizing the existing detention pond just south of the site, which discharges into a roadside ditch along Highway K. Architecturally... Go to the next page. This is... It's going to closely resemble the newly constructed Dutch Bros on Bryan Road. It's going to be almost an exact replica. We've reviewed staff comments, have no issues with the conditions listed, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Members of the Commission, does anyone have any question for the petitioner this evening? Mayor?
Hopefully, this place does as much business as the one on Bryan Road.
I'd imagine it will. That'd be pretty hard... Tough to top.
Yeah, it's going to be hard. So you said that you have 16 cars?
Correct.
Which is... Is that 16 cars for each lane, or is that eight?
16 total.
So is that eight cars per...
Yeah, it kind of merges before it gets to the pickup lane, but roughly probably eight per lane, yeah.
Okay. But I mean, you guys are quick, so it shouldn't take...
Yeah, I mean, it's in their best interest to go as quick as possible. Yeah.
Okay.
And I understand... I drove by the site on opening day. I'm sure most of you heard about it, how backed up it was. We'll work with City on grand opening over the first week or so to make sure that there is a proper plan in place for spillover.
All right. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? This is a public comment, so we have one person that has completed a comment card. Mr. Deanoff?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Commission. My name is R. C. A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. Couple of issues that I have with this. First of all, I'd like to welcome Dutch Bros. I think it's a needed sales tax, good economic development, they have a good product, and I wish them all the success. There's a couple of safety issues that I'd like the Commission to address. Number one, around the ordering window, it's kind of unclear on their display or on their site plan if there's appropriate safety ballards that are around that ordering window. So if somebody steps on the gas and ends up running into the ordering window area, that we don't have customers or pedestrians that are injured. As you all probably read in the TV news media the last couple of days, the tragedy in Chatham, Illinois, a suburb of Springfield, where somebody drove right through a school, a daycare center, and there were no safety ballards, and that person just drove through the entire building. Four human beings, three children, young children, lost their life, and so we want to make sure that safety ballards are properly installed at this ordering window to protect pedestrians and customers alike. I'm sure the applicant doesn't want a lawsuit over an accident, and so I would imagine they're going to do the correct and correct action. The pedestrian crosswalk going across the aisles, I'm not sure if they have access. I see that we have the parking, but there needs to be appropriate on the... I guess that would be the west side of the building where the parking is, that there needs to be a dedicated pedestrian crosswalk that's marked with the appropriate paint markings, so drivers know where the pedestrian crossing is. We have a shared path, which is... It's my understanding it's currently in there and it's intact. I'd like to see the applicant pay some type of maintenance fee for the upkeep of that 10-foot cross-access, or not cross-access, for the shared path along the roadway. I think that takes in my concerns, and I wish them all the luck. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
All right. With that, we will close the public comment and ask the petitioner to come forward and address the concerns of the resident, and, well, is any other questions the Commission might have?
We do have ballards surrounding the pickup window. We do have pedestrian markings from the west side of the building going off-site to the shared-use path, and I don't believe there is a shared-use path there right now, so...
All right. Members of the Commission, does anyone else have any questions? Commissioner Howard?
Thank you, ma'am. The order boards, are there two for each aisle?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
It shows the order boards in the drive aisle, and there's one at the entrance, and then is there another set further in?
Can you see my mouse on this? Are you talking about right there in the middle? There's one right at the beginning. There's an order window right at the beginning, and then there's a second one about halfway through, just displaying menu options.
Ideally, people drive into the interior ones, and as they back up, they'll get to the...
Yes. I believe that first one is there for if the line were to get that long, people would still have access to view the menu.
I was concerned that there wasn't... You had back... You had parking for backup, but I did want to make sure that it wasn't all backed up into the drive aisle.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
That second menu board is for people just to... If they had the option, just to bypass the first one, continue on and view the second one.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for overflow. So if the... You know, I know you guys are quick, but if that drive aisle were to max out, would the traffic kind of bend to the east in the parking lot, or would it circle back around the south side of the building? Could you just clarify a little?
If I were the store manager who's being responsible with that, I would advise them on backing up into the parking lot. It's not set in stone, I know, but there is going to be a cross-access agreement between Dutch Bros and the surrounding lot, and I'd imagine there will be some type of verbiage in that for backflow of the drive-through. I don't think back... I don't think stacking it up towards Highway K is a good idea, just you run into a whole bunch of problems with that. So I would imagine, since there's plenty of room in that parking lot, that that would be the backup spot, but I'm not the store manager.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you... Once you get all your permits, do you have any kind of construction schedule?
Curtis, your microphone.
How long have you been on this commission?
We're good. So do you have any kind of idea on your construction schedule?
I believe the Bryan Road location was up in in-between three and four months from groundbreak, and that was during the winter, so I would imagine this one would probably be a little quicker. Well, depending on when they break ground, but that was the last one, and it's... The building is almost a carbon copy, and the site is not too different than the original location, so we're probably looking at three to four months total.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? If not, do we have a motion regarding the conditional use permit for this item on the agenda?
Make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Charlie.
All right. We have a motion and a second to make a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the conditional use permit for the property at 100 Crossroads Plaza Drive. Dutch Bros is the contract purchaser for a drive-through kiosk. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. There will be a recommendation of approval to the City Council, and this will be at the next City Council meeting next Thursday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Also, we have a... Do we have a motion regarding the site plan for this item on the agenda?
Madam Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Link.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for the property at 100 Crossroads Plaza Drive. Dutch Bros is the contract purchaser for the drive-through kiosk. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is for 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive. This is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive. 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive LLC is the property owner for a building addition. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Cliff Heitman with Bax Engineering on behalf of Blom International. She mentioned with a site plan for 1450 Hoff Road. This is Lot 9 of Hoff Industrial Park. I2-heavy industrial zoning is throughout the park. The view there is the existing conditions on the site, kind of the L-shaped building, the concrete and loading docks in areas in the front. The green square you see toward the rear is where they're proposing to put in a building Shown in this view in the dark brown at the rear, 16,500-square-foot warehouse addition would be a metal building to match the existing facility that's there. There'll also be some work done in the front area, some of that asphalt or some of that pavement's in disrepair, needs to be brought up to meet an ADA standard in terms of access and walk, so there'll be some replacement of concrete slab in there in front of the building to bring that into compliance with ADA accessibility. The drive that's been talked about along the western portion of the building, shown there in the light gray, will be gravel and a construction access drive during the construction of that portion of the building at the rear of the lot. The builder, Mr. Ed Lambert, did meet with the Fire Marshal at Ingle on site, talked through the process and what he was proposing to do. He's well aware of the constrictions there in terms of topography utilities and that access road. The Fire Marshal was understanding of that, and while he said they could get back there if they needed to, it's not a... It doesn't meet their standards, so he requested that drive either be gated, chained, and then labeled or signed as such that it's not a fire access drive. It will serve some purpose for the owner and the building. It allows service structures of HVAC units and things like that to get to the back. It's nothing they intend to use on a daily basis. They don't park cars back there. Their employees aren't back there. It's not a truck entrance. Their truck dock is all in the front, so it wasn't without trying to get the full width access road in there. It's just not extremely feasible. There are overhead utilities down there, and as you know, Hoff Industrial Park's been in place for a number of years, so to try and retrofit that to meet some of the standards is a little tough. That was a conversation with the Fire Marshal as well. So we did share that correspondence with staff. I think that Ethan, in the pre-meeting, kind of relayed that to you, that they had some of that information from the Fire Marshal. So I'd be happy to address any questions. Again, the building's not anything fancy. It's just the metal panel that's going to match the existing metal panel that's on the building now, but I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask David, is it a requirement for that drive aisle to be back behind the building?
Is it a requirement to be there? No.
The city does not require it?
No. I think this is something the owner was wanting to do for his own personal business operations, but nothing the city requires.
So the fire department's a different entity. If they don't require it, then we're good.
Right.
Okay. Secondly, what would they be storing in that warehouse facility? Do you know?
They are a company that does industrial coatings and linings, so any number of things in terms of coatings for linings of tanks, and they exist in that building now. They've been there a number of years, I believe, so the warehouse will be an expansion of that facility in terms of how they process that and what they do with those coatings. I don't have any proprietary information on what they do there, sir, but that's what's inside the building.
Okay. So any kind of a fire issue the fire department would be aware of?
Yes. Again, that's why they met with the Fire Marshal early on. The contractor, Ed Lambert, had him out on the site early on, so he was well aware of what they were doing. Again, this wouldn't meet a typical fire access road, but he acknowledges the fact that you got to make do with what you can get, so...
So the fire department has been in there, and they're aware of what's stored in that building?
Yep. It's... The building's been in... Blom's been in use in that building for a number of years already, so the fire...
I'm just being a little redundant. That's all.
Understood. Yes, sir. They are aware. They are aware of the expansion, obviously, because we've shared the plans with them for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Members of the Commission, anyone else have any other questions or comments for the petitioner? If not, then do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve staff recommendations, Nunnery.
Second, Seymour.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive. 1450 Hoff Industrial Drive LLC is the property owner for a building addition. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
Motion carries. I take it you're on the next one, huh?
Yes, ma'am. I was trying to...
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for property on Bryan Road. New Freedom Family Medicine LLC is the property owner for the... For a new building. So do we have to present this item?
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize, my file is not opening here, so we'll have to do it without the benefit of a video file for you all to look at, so it's not pulling up on my USB. of a video file for you all to look at, so it's not pulling up on my USB. As you mentioned, this is a site plan for New Freedom Family Medical, Dr. Jennifer Allen. She currently has her practice here in O'Fallon, just down the road, actually, at 1074 Bryan Road, proposing to move just up the road to this lot, Lot 2 of Sunview Plaza. It's a 0.79 acre tract of ground at Sunview.
Cliff, Ethan, can you pull up? So, I mean, I know you had it on your, during the workshop, so I mean, that way.
Oh, yeah. He should have the black, at least the black and white version of that. Yeah, I'm not sure why it's my.
I'm just, that way, that way everybody at home can see.
Perfect.
What it is.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks.
That's a lot better.
Yes, that, very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate the, I appreciate the assist there. Technology is great until it's not, so. So as I mentioned, Dr. Allen has a facility just up the road, a practice at 1074 Bryan Road. What she's proposing here, and what we're proposing for her, is a 5,400-square-foot medical office building. This will be set up for two-tenant use. She would occupy about 3,000 square feet of it, and there'd be 2,400 square feet of additional space for lease. Access is from existing drives that were put in place for what is now a dental facility. It was originally Heaven Sent Donut, for those of you that have been on the commission long enough to know that. We did that several years ago. I'm old enough, because I was here and did it too. But anyway, those, those drives are in place, cross-access easements are in place for that. This, this lot was planned to have that access, those access points, when this went in many years ago, originally. So what we're proposing, as I mentioned, is the building, it will have essentially two fronts, one to the south and then one to the east, so parking's provided on both sides of the building for each of those separate tenants. We are providing a small detention water quality area toward the north of the, north of the building there, as you can see. And then to the west, there's an existing site-proof fence that went in place when the original Heaven Sent Donut was built. That's residential, just to our western property line there. Some of those existing trees will be disturbed with grating, so we'll have to replant some of that tree buffer along that western property line, so just wanted to point that out as well. The building, and Colin with CJB Architects is here this evening if you've got questions. The building actually is rather complimentary to the Twin Oaks Family Dental that's there in terms of, this is a whiteboard and batten, the building's got the asphalt shingle roof, has the stone wainscoting along the, the base there, and then some additional kind of wood accents and trim. So Colin is here, if you have questions, he'd be happy to address those regarding the building, or I can address questions regarding the, the site plan. And I believe Dr. Allen is here also, if you have questions regarding her practice. So we've got it covered all the way around.
I was just going to ask, you keep in the old, the other place, too? So you're going to have two locations?
No, I, I lease that. Thank you for having me.
Give us your name and address.
I am Jennifer Allen. I live in Washington at 3483 Highway A.
Okay.
I lease that space.
Okay.
It become too small.
Okay. I would just want to, since you're just down the street, so I just didn't know if you were going to keep both, both locations.
No. I have, I do have three locations, one in Washington, one in Herman, and then here. And we've been here already about three and a half years.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was just curious.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the Commission regarding this item? All right. If not, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
I'm trying to make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Charlie Nogger.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for the property on Bryan Road, New Family Medicine LLC is the property owner. It's for a new building. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
I have one question. This is actually, this isn't actually on Bryan Road, the address, right, is it?
Well, it's Lot 2, it's Lot 2 of Sunview Plaza, which is likely addressed off of Bryan Road. The access will be, it has an access on Bryan Road, also has an access off of Sunview.
Okay. So the address will be Bryan Road?
I, don't quote me on that, but I, I believe so. I don't know if we've gone through the addressing portion of this just yet.
Okay. All right. Well, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda this evening is a nomination and election for the position of vice chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this point, we'll request nominations for the position of vice chairperson to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of one year.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Nunnery.
Second, Charlie Nogger.
All right. Do we have any other nominations, or?
Madam Chair, make a motion to close the nominations.
Do we have a second?
Hennessy.
All right. So all in favor of, so the nominations are now closed, all in favor that Vice Chairperson Nunnery will continue as the Chair, Vice Chairperson for a term of one year? Members of the Commission, we're just going to do a, a voting, all, members of the Commission, voting, sign aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No? All right. Motion carries.
He didn't vote himself no.
All right. So next on the agenda this evening is a nomination and election of the position of chairperson. At this point, we request nominations for the person, for the position of chairperson to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of one year.
Nominate Carolyn Thomas for the position of chairperson.
Second, Howard.
Do we have any other nominations?
Most enclosed nominations.
Second, Nunnery.
All right. Voting is closed for the nomination of the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission for one additional year. Members of the Commission, voting, voting, sign aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Trying to get back into used to voting, sign aye with it.
Yes, it's hard. I'm used to this. All right. Voting is closed, and I will remain chairperson for another year. Next item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar this evening is a stormwater management and best practice management, best management practices, facilities, maintenance agreement for the villages at Post Farms, the Hoff Road Phase 2 project, Tom Geneva and North Cool Springs intersection improvements, the acquisition of certain lands, Darting Greenway Sports Park to Bluebird Meadow Park project, acquisition of certain lands. Do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar this evening?
Motion to approve, Nunnery.
Second, Howard.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar for the May 1st, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. The consent calendar has been approved. At this point, we have a City Council action update. Do we have someone here to present that?
Yeah, we had four items that went to the City Council over the last month, and all four were approved. That was for Cowodony Flats, the apartment complex with the mixed use. The Hotel at Technology Drive, 1155 Technology Drive was approved. Metalwood, the senior housing complex phase was also approved, and then our zoning code amendment was also approved.
Okay. All right. We also have a thoroughfare plan update. Do we have someone to present that item?
Yeah, that's kind of an informational item for right now. That's something staff's been looking at here the last couple of months. We, we like to keep that current, and we were looking at it here recently, and we have some edits and updates we wanted to make. So we've attached in there kind of the marked-up version that we've been working on, and then we have the one that's adopted in our current comprehensive plan. So I do think, I just want to give you a heads-up that we are looking at this, making sure it's updated, and we're going to be coming back. It does require a public hearing whenever we're ready to adopt it. So this is just our working document, so we're not quite there yet, and we actually looked at it a little bit more today and have a meeting set up in a couple of weeks to look at it further. But it is kind of a, an ongoing thing, but we just want to make sure it's, it's as up to date as possible. But really, for right now, I just wanted you to know we're working on that. It'll be coming back here in the next, you know, few months or so.
Okay.
And if there's any comments or anything you think we need to add or missed, please let us know. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, do you have something for the Commission?
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to thank Oliver Wexler for his time on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Congratulate him on the election to the City Council. And I want to thank Ms. Cook, Councilwoman Cook. This is your last meeting on the P&amp;Z Commission. Congratulations on your reelection, and, you know, thank you for your service on this commission, and good luck on historic.
Thank you. I've enjoyed it. It's been fun, guys.
All right. Does anyone else have anything else for the Commission? If not, the May 1st, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is adjourned.